Sunshine you've given us, Father. And Father God, we ask you to move this forward today and make a help of making the right decision for this county and for the people of this county, Father. And Father, we certainly want to pray for the people who live in Indiana, who are going through the water and flood they're going through now. Father God, if you would, just put your loving arms around them and take care of them and give them shelter, Father. Father God, we thank you again for all the prayers you've done and all the help you've given everybody. In prayer, we want to hold in that and pray again.
(Inaudible)
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 First order of business this morning will be public comments. Is there anyone here for public comment this morning? Saying none, we'll move right on into business. First order of business is, we've got a couple certificates of appreciation. We have two longtime employees of what used to be just EMS, now it's become the Department of Public Safety. I've known both these gentlemen for many, many years through their contact at the hardware store and then working for the county. Both of them are model employees and we hate to see them go. Twenty years of service in the line of services they were in, they've seen a lot and they've seen, most importantly, they've seen this department go from a fledgling department, you know, that really saw mighty struggles, to a very efficient, well-trained, well-staffed, well-equipped department, probably one of the, if not the best, rural departments in the state. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to add before we...
(Inaudible)
This is a sad day for me because I don't want to see y'all go, but I understand your decisions. It's been a pleasure working with you both.
God, I ain't say I'll go, but I know what it's gonna be like. Twenty years is a long time, I put in thirty-eight. So it'll be, it'll be like a whole backpack taken away from you. And y'all need to endure the rest of your lives, as much as you can. And we do appreciate everything you've done and we appreciate the good man you trained and the ones you're leaving behind and take care of this county. Well, I appreciate your time and service that you've done and I appreciate it. I know the citizens of this county and those too.
As well, like Mr. John said, the people that y'all are leaving behind that you've worked with and trained, without doubt, I thank you for that. I thank you for your service and make your journeys from here on out be exactly what you, you want them to be. And sincerely, thank you.
(Inaudible)
(Laughter)
I'd also be remiss if I didn't mention that Steve has done a great job. He stepped in after David left and has ran the department, the department very well. So we appreciate that too. If y'all want to come on up, we'll give you your certificate.
(Inaudible)
(Laughter) (Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Morning, Mr. Chairman.
Morning, Mr. Board. I'm Scott Coons, the Executive Director of the North Central Florida Regional Planning Council. I'm here today to introduce you to our region. As many of you may know, the legislature last session reorganized the regions in the state of Florida and has now assigned Levy County to the North Central Florida region. During this past year, our council has gone through a reorganization to add Levy County and Marion County to the council. I'm here today to make a presentation, to give you an overview of the council and ask your consideration to adopt a resolution on adopting the amended interlocal agreement of forms of council to become a member local government of our region and to appoint a county commissioner to be your elected representative on the council board. We'll talk a few minutes about who we are, what we do, then a brief summary. To mention the legislature last session reorganized the regions, there are now ten regions in the state of Florida. The mission of our council is very simple and straightforward, is to improve the quality of life for the citizens in our region through four activities: coordinating growth management, protecting regional resources, promoting economic development, and providing technical services to our member local governments. The region now consists of thirteen counties and forty-five municipalities and thirteen of those municipalities are member local governments. The region is the largest geographic in the state, covers now ten thousand square miles and has a population of about nine hundred thousand. The council itself is made up of two-thirds local elected officials, county commissioners and city commissioners from throughout the region, one fairer members or citizens appointed by the governor. Understate, all counties are required to be members of the region councils, and our region's cities are confused with all three members. Those are the existing eleven member counties and the two new counties, York County here at Levy and Marion County to the state. And those are the current thirteen municipalities that are also members of the council at present time. The council is governed by an executive committee. The officers this year are county commissioner, Kirk Davis from Madison County, vice chair Ms. Thomas of gubernatorial appointees from Dixie County, secretary treasurer is Mayor Davis from the city of Waldo, and executive committee member is Vice Mayor Wilford from the city of Lashla, and media head, chair, vice county commissioner Reddick from Bradford County. Also joined by ten other council members that serve and board of directors on throughout the region. We also have a number of official officers and members based over state agencies, Department of Economic Opportunity, Department of Protection, Department of Transportation, and three water management districts that are part of the region. Council has four, excuse me, five principal areas of activity, and the first is regional. Just as you have a local community comprehensive plan to guide the growth and development of the county, we're required to have under state law a strategic regional policy plan for the region and focus on these five subject areas: affordable housing, economic development, emergency preparedness, natural resources, and transportation. Council is also the designated area-wide clearinghouse, which is designated by the governor to review all federal grant and loan applications and provide advisory comments to the funding of federal agencies. Last year, the council reviewed some eighty-five projects totaling over thirty-two million dollars in federal assistance, and not all those were successfully funded, but many did work. And without this review process, those dollars would not be available to the communities in our region. It also reviews local government comprehensive plans and provides advisory comments to cities and counties, and reviewed thirty-four of those last year, a number of small city community block grant applications, municipal applications, US Department of Agriculture, and several other related items. Secondary is public safety. We staff the North Central Florida Local Emergency Planning Committee. Every time I mention this, I need to point out, it's really a misnomer, it's really a regional emergency response committee made up of local first responders from the counties throughout the region. We have a region-wide response plan for hazardous material incidents, and they review and update that annually. And twenty years ago, this group recognized if there was an incident on one of our highways, rail lines, or a tanker facility that had a hazardous material, there were only three trained and equipped fire rescue units that could respond to such incidents in our region: Gainesville Fire Rescue, Calhasy Fire Rescue, and Valdosta, Georgia Fire Rescue, which would be a large area in the center of our region that could take forty-five minutes or an hour for a unit to respond to. So several counties, municipalities formed the North Central Florida Regional Hazardous Materials Response Team. Each of them had adopted a local ordinance to provide mutual aid to one another and cross recovery provision that requires the party responsible for the incident, hopefully the insurance company, to be responsible for the cost for cleanup and reverse the local government that responds to that incident. We also work extensively with the state Division of Emergency Management, particularly in the area of hurricane preparedness and planning. Identify areas that are subject to storm surge and tropical storms on coastal counties, such as Levy County, and then identify inland shelters for locations where individuals would be sheltered in case of a storm, and clearly identify evacuation maps to get residents off the coast inland during a specific storm. We also, through the Local Emergency Planning Committee, provide a lot of training to first responders throughout the region: fire rescue, emergency medical, law enforcement, and emergency medical services. Last year, we coordinated and provided twenty-six classes throughout the region. Classes are offered to local governments at no additional cost to communities and funded through a federal grant program from the US Department of Transportation. Last year, we trained over three hundred fifty first responders on those five thousand hours of training. And we also distribute the Emergency Response Guidebook. All of your first responders should have this guidebook in their units. It helps them identify and read the placards you see in the back of the truck or rail tanker car if they come up on incident, letting them know what kind of chemical is in the tank and how large area they need to cordon off for safety before the response and recovery can go out. Also, under state law, every county is required to conduct an onsite visit and provide a report to the Department of Environmental Protection each year for businesses that generate hazardous waste in their community. Most of these are related to used motor vehicle oils such as used oil, transmission fluid, brake fluid, things of this nature. The second most common is directly included from contracting facilities. We provide service to our local governments, and we've been working with third counties this past year in providing these onsite visits and providing educational information to businesses to help them properly dispose their hazardous waste on a cost-to-fee basis for ten counties in our region. Third area is economic development. We're a designated economic development district. It's the designation of the US Department of Commerce, which provides some funding to us to do strategic economic development planning for the region, provide technical assistance to member local governments, as well as local economic development organizations. And one of those services is to conduct economic impact studies, identify the secondary employment, income generation, population growth, and abnormal impacts of revenue from a business located or expanding in your community. This is also provided manage for cost to communities. As I mentioned, we do strategic economic development planning and comprehensive economic development strategy for the region, which is based on the Florida Chamber Foundation's six pillars of this current Florida's future economy, which is the same framework used by the State Department of Economic Opportunity, the State Economic Plan, as well as the other nine councils around the state. The document is designed to diversify and expand the economy of regions, and each year we report to the US Department of Commerce and other jobs created in private investment. This past year, over six hundred jobs and a hundred million dollars of private investment took place in the region's strategic strategies of economic development. The five principal strategies are to promote the two rural economic development catalysts. You know the county is one of the rural area opportunities designated by the governor in this fourteen county area of the North Central Florida. There are two catalysts, one located in Lake City and one in the west of Largo, and we're starting to promote development of those two sites. Second is to promote regional tourism, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. Also, third, to increase for labor force for healthcare and life sciences, which is a main occupation in our region for hospital and medical facilities. Third is to seek opportunities for multi-mode infrastructure with traditional water and sewer, rail line, transportation access, as well as broadband. And then fifth, is to expand and support the development of regional incubators and research parks, from related to research from the University of Florida. As I mentioned, tourism, about twenty years ago now, as part of economic development planning, we recognized there might be an opportunity to promote our region for nature-based, heritage-based, and cultural-based tourism. So we formed a task force, known as the Original Florida Tourism Task Force, which became quite successful, and after five years, spun off and created its own separate organization made up of tourist development councils throughout the region. Levy County has been a participant in that organization from its inception, and we continue to provide staff support to the organization for their services. And it received an innovation award this past year from the National Association of Development Organizations for developing bicycle routes and posting those online to their website. Those are the current twelve counties that participate in that activity, as I mentioned, including Levy County. They have a very robust website, which they did a major overhaul and redesigned it, launched this past January. They attend travel shows in partnership with Visit Florida, which is a state agency responsible for promoting tourism in the state, both in-state, throughout the eastern United States, and several international trade shows as well. And they distribute collateral material for assures at motels throughout I-75 throughout Georgia, along I-75 in Florida, from Georgia line to Wildwood. Fourth area is local government assistance. We provide assistance to cities and counties in assisting them in complying with the State Community Planning Act when your land rezone matters. And we provide service again on a at-cost, fee basis for those six counties, as well as those eight municipalities. And this year, we also are now providing service for Cheekland, Williston, and Apeas. And last year, our staff assisted those communities in processing a union eighty-three development applications for comprehensive plan amendments, rezonings, special receptions, and other development tools. We guide with those for impacts of public facilities, and also assist communities in your seven-year required evaluation and update of your local government comprehensive plan. The second part of local government assistance is community block grants. We work with small cities and small counties in securing community block grants for housing renovation, neighborhood improvements, downtown redevelopment, and economic development. And we've been quite successful over the past forty years. This program is securing over fifty-five million dollars for a hundred and eight projects in our region. These are some of the jurisdictions that we assisted this past year, and we provide administrative support and grant management services for projects that are successful in funding. The fifth and final area is transportation. We have two programs there. We provide staff support to the Metropolitan Transportation Planning Organization for the Gainesville urbanized area. This is the city Gainesville Commission of Lashla County Commission, seeing together as a transportation planning board for the metropolitan area for highway transit, bicycle, pedestrian improvements. They adopted five-year transportation improvement program. This past year, it totaled one hundred seventy-six million dollars for transportation projects in the first year of the program. This planning process enables those federal dollars made available to the community. Also completed a statewide twenty-six, our most United University Avenue adjacent to the University of Florida in Gainesville, looking at pedestrian and bicycle safety, and identified a number of projects that Department of Transportation will be undertaking in the next five years to improve bicycle investment safety in this area. The second area is the transportation disadvantaged paratransit service program, which is funded by the state of Florida. Actually, each of us fund that each year when we renew our automobile license tag. One dollar fifty cents from the annual fee goes into a state trust fund, which is then distributed to the sixty-seven counties to provide paratransit services to heavily disabled and low-income folks merely to attend, make it through medical visits for dialysis, cancer treatments, and other type of medical services. And over this past year, working in our counties, over a quarter million trips, or two hundred sixty-five thousand trips are coordinated to these individuals. We serve as what's known as the planning agency for the program, and responsible for developing a annual service plan for providing new services, providing staff support for the local coordinating board, which meets four times throughout the year. And during this past year, we were designated by the State Commission for Transportation Disadvantage as the planning agency for Levy County and an airport coordinating board over the past year. And under state law, metropolitan planning organizations are the official planning agencies in Lashla County, providing staff support for that entity, but also coordinate those parent county services for elderly and disabled in Lashla County. How do we make all this happen? I'm extremely fortunate to work with a team of twelve individuals. This is our current senior management team, and these folks actually make things happen on a daily basis, project managers and planners, and administrative support staff who work with our communities, and provide these programs and services throughout the region. So in summary, there are now ten regions in the state. Councils are comprised of two-thirds elected officials, one-third gubernatorial appointees. Planning Council is a planning, coordinating, facilitating, advising, convening organization. They're not a regulatory agency, we've let you show permits. We don't have the authority or power to require anyone to do anything or prohibit anyone from doing anything. I'd like to say we have the power and persuasion of good ideas. We provide advice and recommendations to communities throughout their party. Again, our five programs or activities, you can see are very diversified, regional activities, public safety, economic development, local government assistance, and transportation. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the overview of the council on these programs. I'd like to answer the questions of the board members here.
Mr. Lily, do you want the planning council, although we did with the Kuchi with Mr. Moulton? Because Danny was, I know he'll appreciate this. Mr. Coons is a far cry from Mr. Moulton in his demeanor and the way he presents. Mr. Moulton was very slow and it took him forever to get out of sentence this guy. That's why our meetings get down so early. It's been a pleasure to go and attend their meetings as a, I don't know, observer, I guess. He like breathed in real deep, and we talked, and it was really strange, anyway. We're required by the government, I'll get y'all in just a second, we're required by the government to do this, by the state to do this, so I mean, we don't really have much of a choice, but...
We have two members on the board and a fellow. We have...
One member for ninety-nine thousand people.
Yeah, one of them.
That's where we are now.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we're structured a little bit differently. Our member of government is each, I have one elected official serving in the council, part of larger jurisdictions, over a hundred thousand population, and three representatives, that's Lashla County, Gainesville, and Marion County, all of our local governments.
Mr. Cannon?
Mr. Cameron, Mr. Coons, Townes, with his agency. Has any input on the I-75 task force?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I was appointed about Secretary of Transportation to serve on that task force, along with Commissioner Meeks and county commissioners from counties throughout this area, and the other directors in the council and the regions that are affected by the project. And the council did provide comments to the task force concerning their future plans, recommending that their first focus on maximizing utilizing the existing transportation quarters, I-75, US 301, 441, before in consideration of any new quarters for the region.
Mr. Stone?
I actually have two questions. Did anyone from the With the Kuchi Regional Planning Council come over to the new, to your, the newly organized council?
Employees or...
Employees.
Mr. Chairman, we get our one of the former employees for the With the Kuchi Regional, Lauren Yeder, who's been in our staff for the past year. Lauren works in our she grew up information mapping, as well as provides backup support for transportation, city programs, and a system program.
My second question is, I'm a little disturbed to see that one-third of the group is made up of gubernatorial appointments. It really appears from your presentation that there is going to be a whole lot more, I'm gonna use the word, interference by the governor. Is that, is that how you see it?
Mr. Chairman, the council, as I mentioned earlier, is formed through interlocal agreement among the counties and cities in North Central Florida. The councils are recognized through state statute and are required to exist, but they're associations of local governments. But state law does provide for the governor to provide one-third of the appointees, but two-thirds are elected officials from counties and cities throughout the region.
You might actually really don't want to say that. Mr. Collins, when we served with the With the Kuchi Regional Planning Council, since my time as servant there, the governor has had quite a few people pointed to that. Keep in mind that if they didn't show up, they didn't get the checks, quite a few of them never showed up. So, I mean, you got your give and take on that, and a lot of them that serves on, wanted out of California anyway, they have a lot of good input, they really did, and they served before as well.
Time will tell.
Do I hear a motion to approve the resolution? Make a motion to approve, say.
Can I ask, we took the number of the resolution, it's not in on the resolution in your packet, but, Ms. Susan, do you have the resolution number?
Yeah, resolution twenty sixteen zero four three.
Maybe we'll just have that.
We have a motion, or you're second. I, the motion is second, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Do we need to, we need to also appoint the county commissioner to be the representative of the council?
Make motion, you keep the current person who is chairman, Meeks, serve on that board.
Motion by Commissioner Stevens to appoint John Meeks to serve as the county's representative as the planning council. Second by Mr. Rooks, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Coons.
Mr. Chairman, this board, thank you for your time, and we welcome you to the region. As Senator, as a transition here, we haven't worked with the counties, but look forward to working with you in the future, and Commissioner Meeks has been attending one of our meetings and looking forward to meeting you, so thank you, gentlemen.
Yes, sir.
I have a question for the speaker. Did Michael Arnold apply for a job with you folks?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Arnold did not apply for our position at my council.
All right, thank you, Mr. Coons. I look forward to working with you all in the future. The meetings have been very efficiently run, I mean, they're usually over an hour and a half. There has been some excitement. People in Columbia County don't want to even chew your balls. Say that.
Obviously, what a...
I don't know.
Now that we're part of it, it may have more people.
You know, they, they run about that.
(Inaudible)
Would we do that, or we have to, here non-intended, do that?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
The interim agreement and bylaws of the council does not provide for alternate commuters through Zane County, however, if the destination commuter is not able to attend and another commissioner is willing and able to attend, we're welcome there, and we would reverse some of the rights, but they've not had a good opportunity.
All right, that ends with that. (Inaudible) All right, well, while the, we'll move on then to our next order of business, our next board, Christmas, building council, Mr. David Jacob, David, do you need the, you need the overgun?
This is not my favorite part of the program.
Morning.
Executive Director, Mr. Coons, visited the council, also the Enterprise Zone Development Agency.
Thank you.
(Inaudible)
Because you always hear from me, I decided I'd have some backup today, which is Skipper Henderson behind me, the chairman of the Enterprise Zone Development Agency. We are here to ask for the adoption of a resolution that will repeal the authority of the EDA. This is not because of performance or anything like that, this is just out of practicality. The legislature this past year decided to forego extending the enterprise zone program, and therefore, we've had this board for a couple of years, really, in limbo, just kind of waiting to see what was gonna happen. And so with that said, with our decision, really is no need for EDA. But before that, I wanted to turn it over to Skipper real quick for some insight. But before that, I wanted to turn it over to Skipper real quick for some, some insight.
Morning.
Morning.
Thought I was through the board. Uh, but I felt like it was appropriate, um, for me, as chairman of the Leaky County Enterprise Zone Development Agency, to come here in that fashion to address the board. To me, this, um, Enterprise Zone Development Agency was a, um, something I put pride in, something that we did as a community effort through a lot of folks' help. Uh, and just as a, just to give you a brief synopsis, some of you were not here, uh, at the time that this all took place, but just to kind of briefly let you know that, uh, you know, what now, in two thousand and six, Leaky County Board of County Commissioners at the time threw some recommendations from the Development Authority and their Economic Development Council at the time, uh, wanting to take advantage of the state of Florida's enterprise zones. In the chapter in the statute, chapter two ninety, that allowed for the county to adopt an enterprise zone. And, uh, at that time, Pam Blair was the executive director of the, um, the Development Council, and, um, and Pam took the lead on that and, and really was, uh, responsible for a large, a large part of it. This is just a book that was, that gives a lot of history on the, the, uh, enterprise development zones. Well, it had to happen, but, um, in two thousand and six, we started the process. On September the twentieth, two thousand and six, the board at the time passed two resolutions. One resolution was to appoint an enterprise zone development agency aboard, and the other resolution was to adopt maps. We actually, you know, we had to go through the county and lay out a map and system and establish the actual zone. The areas of the land in the county should be eligible for, uh, refunds to the state or quarter under the Department of Revenue for tax refunds and so on, so forth, if they located, you know, new businesses in the zone, made improvements to their existing buildings, you know, anything that spent money, generated, uh, in, uh, sales tax for the state of Florida, they can make application for refund of a portion of that tax. So, at that time, I think it was Sammy Urdy, best his heart, saw fit to make me chairman. I don't know how, or how, and I, Will Briney might be brought responsible for that too, he sits back in the corner. But I was, I was made chairman without anybody consulting me about that, but it happened. So Pam and I went throughout this county, appearing before every municipality, uh, numerous meetings, um, you know, getting this thing going, and it took a tremendous amount of time and effort, uh, but it, but we accomplished our goal, and on February the twelfth, two thousand and seven, the governor's office approved our enterprise zone agency and our map. So we were off and going. Um, so over the last eight years, uh, through the end of twenty fifteen, there, there's been many taxpayers in the county that, uh, have received thousands and thousands of dollars in refunds. We, we are not privy to the information as far as knowing how much you want exactly returned, because that's between the Department of Revenue and the taxpayer. All we could do was ask the people who made applications, if we had to sign off on these applications. Um, just ask them to come back and tell us, you know, how much money they, they will return. And some of them did, some of them didn't, but we do know just a lot of money was returned back to taxpayers from the counties. And I say that and say that this was the one agency, one public agency council or what have you, that actually returned a real dollar to taxpayers, uh, which is why I think it meant a lot to me. You know, words, words are good, but money talks, and people like getting tax money back. And so that, that's what this did. Um, however, the, uh, Congress chose, uh, to let that law sunset. And so chapter two ninety sunset, I guess that's the proper term, sunset, um, on December thirty-first, twenty fifteen. Like Dave said, we've had a board now that's had no purpose. Um, our maps no longer used. Um, so this, this opportunity for Leaky County taxpayers is gone. So, um, we, we are, uh, effectively officially need to be disvent, disvent. Um, I, I did, we did, we did something unique. We adopted a budget. We didn't re- ask Leaky County, although we were an agency, the Leaky County Development, the Enterprise Zone Development Agency is a county agency. Was a county agency. But the county did, did fund it in its entirety, contributed as did each municipality. So we had a, we had a working budget. Um, now we have a little money that's open. So that money needs to be dispersed, our checking account needs to be closed. Um, and you guys, you know, should pass the resolution and move away with the agency. So what I'm here today is to tell you that we have six thousand three hundred and twenty-eight dollars and sixty-six cents left over in our budget that, uh, I would like to close out. If you guys want to have any thoughts about that money.
I think, you know, I can't make a push, but, I mean, this money was raised for economic development. I think that we only, instead of giving it back to the general fund, we ought to assign it to Nature Bush Business Development Council. I think that to his budget to work with to continue the charge of, of economic development. Much like Skipper, I was very disappointed in the legislature's inaction in allowing the enterprise zones to go away, because I felt for small rural counties, they were important. Um, they were a, a nice incentive to, to help a business that you already had grow and expand or add, you know, employees. But according to the folks I talked to in the legislature, you know, there was a lot of abuse of, of said program. You know, businesses would relocate within enterprise zones and not do anything except collect money, so. Anyway, it, it's a shame it went away, because it was very useful for Leaky County. I'll just say a motion, if that was some fit.
I'll make a motion first off to thank Skipper for doing a well-done job, well-done. He grabbed it and went with it, and he does a fantastic job. Uh, I'll make a motion, we take the money that's left over in the budget and, and it's down to that David budget. He's doing the same thing, not the same thing as Skipper's doing, but same concept, though.
He's the executive director now of the Development Council.
And David's doing a good job, and I, I'll make a motion when he's paid, I'll make mine in that hit, please.
We have a motion by Commissioner Joyner, a second by Commissioner Rooks, is there any further discussion? All in favor of, um, dispersing these funds to the Nature Bush Business Development Council, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thanks, sir. Thank you, Skipper, for all your hard work, Mike.
Give, give David money, give him a look.
We have a motion to adopt resolution twenty sixteen oh forty-eight. A second by Commissioner, motion by Commissioner Rob Meeks, second by Commissioner Rooks, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? She carries. Thank you.
Congress report.
Yes, sir. Uh, it's, it's incredible how fast this year's gone, and I'm sure you all can relate to that, the fact that school's already back. Uh, I feel like they just got out. Um, this year has been the pinnacle of activity, uh, for me personally, for us as an organization. Uh, there is so much going on, it's, uh, as a staff one, it's kind of hard some days to kind of keep everything blurred together. But, uh, what I'm seeing right now is just, you know, that, that light at the end of the tunnel is quicker, uh, than, than you think, and there's a lot of that energy, a lot of that, that promise that's growing, it's not, it's not diminishing. And, uh, we're, we're kind of on the cusp of a lot of breakout moments individually and collectively. One thing that's coming up, we're not even a month away, and it comes with its own set of nerves and, and obligations, whatever, but we've, uh, got a business alliance. This is something that I kind of started kicking around maybe three years ago. Um, for unfortunate circumstances, just my, my workload, I, I didn't feel that I really was in a situation to, to kind of take to the next level. But now we are in a situation where, uh, September seventh, we're having a kick-out, kickoff session, I guess, if you want to use the football season coming back. Uh, we're, uh, we're having a, a inaugural run at this. And this is something that from talking to people yourselves, talking to Rotarys, Chambers, Amnesties, I know some of them are in attendance here today, there was a lot of positive feedback. Uh, businesses said that there's a need to have more connectivity amongst each other, not just, you know, uh, you know, you go to the mixers and whatnot, and you kind of tend to run in the same circles. But with this, you might know, okay, I'm Team Tango, I manufacture airplanes, I'm on rate boats, I manufacture boats, but you might not necessarily know all of the little services that are provided, the, the kind of the, you know, when the, the, you know, downturn in the economy hits and whatnot, we have to kind of expand, we have to kind of adapt, and maybe there's more services that we do in-house that you could all benefit from. And so it's better connecting the dots, it's, it's having that maiden leading brand exposed more and grow from the inside out and, and put us more on the map, not just obviously from a site selector standpoint, from those that aren't here right now, but there's nothing wrong with, with kind of tootin' your own horn and, and being prideful of what you have and knowing that, you know, you, you've accomplished more than maybe you even, um, kind of thought. You know, it's, it's that better awareness of what we're capable of. And for that matter, even though capabilities that haven't even been realized yet. So this is an exciting endeavor. Uh, we've already gotten a huge amount of, um, you know, feedback in terms of those that are going to attend next month, and then we'll just see how it goes. I've already got a calendar of the, uh, at least a year now of topics and, uh, proposed guest speakers and so forth. So it's, it's a new thing, so it's gonna be, you know, typical, there's gonna be those, uh, those glitches, those hiccups or whatever, but we'll get through it, and it's something that I really see as having a significant amount of value for the community and beyond. Uh, and, uh, again, about the same time that this kickoff session is occurring, we are going to be featured in a Business in Focus article, it's about a seven-page spread. This is something that, um, I would love to really take credit for, but this is just something that I was, uh, I contacted out of the blue from this publishing company, mentioned what you had in mind. I looked it over, did some vetting of this, this group and whatnot to see if it was legit, and it is. And they are basically the trade, uh, one of three trade publications that this publishing group handles, Business in Focus being one of, um, the three. Three hundred and sixty-five thousand North American subscribers roughly, so, you know, as much as I like, if my Facebook page is, is popular, does not even come close to three hundred and sixty-five thousand people. And this is anything from CEOs, controllers, uh, your neighbors, friends, family, um, you know, people that are, you know, as, as the expression goes, movers and shakers that could possibly locate here someday, be one of those supply chain companies that looks at the annins of the world, looks at the, you know, regional general hospitals and the, you know, the other industry that we have and says, you know, this is a great community, this is a great place, great cost of living, uh, great, you know, communities. I want to be part of that, that, you know, pride that I was just talking about a few minutes ago. So, uh, I don't know the exact publication date, but I do know it's going to be next month. I was interviewed, uh, we've submitted some photos and so forth, and it was actually a very, uh, fun experience, a very rewarding experience, and, and we haven't even seen, obviously, the, the return yet, because it hasn't been published. But one of those things that, again, having that exposure and talking about everything that makes us who we are. You know, Leaky County, we're part of that, you know, we're the, the Gulf region, you know, we have our own unique identity. You know, you can go to the Keys, you can go to Ocala, you're not gonna get the same feel, the same footing that you have in this, in this region. And so that's what keeps out it. Uh, September first, which is about a week before this Business Alliance kickoff, I'm actually having a meeting with myself, uh, higher education, your school system, and some of our key employers from the targeted industries, to basically, just like the Business Alliance premise, to better connect the employers to our students. Because that's where the future is, not, you know, you don't want to wait until they graduate, decide whether it's college or military, whatever. You want to try to get them even, you know, middle school or even earlier than that. And so what we're looking at is ways to better realize and appreciate the career paths that they do have here. They don't have to, you know, leave, get their degree at UF and never come back, or FSU, or wherever they might end up. You know, that there are possibilities here, there is a future here. Uh, I, I always bring back your comments of the export and the gray matter that we had, which seems like forever, that, uh, two thousand and, I guess that was two thousand and eleven, two thousand, maybe it was two thousand and twelve, um, where we had that joint meeting between yourselves and, and the Business Development Council, and that, that, you were there, that, that, uh, you know, export and gray matter statement was made, where, you know, we, we graduate our view from our high schools, and unfortunately, a lot of them never come back. And so that's what we're looking to, to stop. And so working with higher education, working with Career Source, working with our employers, this is something that came up in conversations. Team Tango was talking about looking at certain help, and things like AutoCAD programming was, was mentioned. And so I ran back, got with, uh, because he's on our board, Mr. Edison, Jeff Edison, talked to him, talked about some ideas, and so now we're starting to have everybody come to the table. There's a lot of excitement, we haven't even met yet, but there's a lot of excitement about the possibilities that something just as simple as coming together, having the two faces meet, um, the possibilities that that'll create. Aside from that, I've got a lot of projects still, uh, some have been alluded to in that, uh, status sheet that I always provide you. Um, one, I just want to make a quick mention is, and this has been going, uh, in March of this coming year, it will be four years I've been working with this gentleman, but Pegasus Farms, Opalponics, he has to go through a pretty serious surgical procedure. And, um, and so despite what could have been a, a life-ending situation had it not been caught, um, the gentleman that I've been dealing with, Mr. Cal, felt says that even, you know, as we're getting ready to go into surgery, he says, you know, this thing is still very much a priority, I'm going to see this through. Um, and so you've got people like that, that regardless of the situations they're facing personally, if they still see the value in what they're, they're doing professionally, and, and he feels that this is something that not just the community, but the world eventually could benefit from. So I just wanted to mention that, that that's just a snapshot of the employers, the, the people, the workers that we have here. Um, and that's what, you know, this, this article that I talked about kind of captures, so. With that said, I don't want to take any more of your time than, than needed, but it's a lot of good stuff going on. And, uh, this year, uh, we haven't even gotten to fiscal year yet, the coming fiscal year, but I, I see a, you know, even a huge change in, in the coming months.
Do you have any questions today?
You answered word for, 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 for.
Yes, ma'am. Yep. Matter of fact, we have a, a annual meeting, uh, with the Planning Council in the area on Acton, Acton, Acton Co. Uh, so that's, uh, October each year, so yes. Uh, and actually, I've been interacting everything from some of those, uh, slides that he showed earlier, some of those initiatives. I've had a lot of communication about, so, yep. Great partners. I know transition's not always a fun thing, but this has been seamless, because they believe.
This doesn't have anything to do with what you're talking about today, but how about college?
In terms of how things are progressing?
Yes.
July of, yeah, July two thousand and seventeen, still, as of right now, everything's moving forward. Of course, they had to wait legislatively, they couldn't do any buildings until they had the funds to be able to finish, uh, the structures. And so moving forward, um, everything, pretty much from the infrastructure that, you know, the roads and sewers will just stay side of it, is pretty much completed, and now we're gonna go to the next stage, where you're gonna start to see the buildings, uh, coming in. And matter of fact, I've already seen my, my possible future office location, so it's, it's kind of, it's exciting, and it's also weird, because, you know, I've been so used to seeing where they've been right now, and it's, uh, you know, it's just, ah, this is really happening. And that year, it's not even here at this point, it's gonna fly by. Let's just be honest, it's, it's already tomorrow, as far as I'm concerned, but hopefully, you know, we're gonna be doing that moving time, so. Yeah, um, Ms. Rand, guess the, the provost of Maryland monitor's, uh, position, yeah, she, uh, you know, she's on my board as well, and so we have, uh, constant talk about that, and you see the excitement building, so.
Oh.
Yep, and of course.
We agree, sir.
I haven't checked it out yet, but of course, the high school in Wilson, uh, I've had a, uh, invitation to go there. I mean, two great educational, uh, institutions, now a person's got a cheap one, which is gonna come, you know, over the next coming year, so. You know, definitely have something to be proud of from, from an educational standpoint, our students have a really good future, I hope.
Ms. Tony? Any plans for a VOTech school?
It's funny you mention that. Part of this, and, and I don't want to confuse you, so I apologize if I did, you've got this kickoff session for the Business Alliance. You've also got the meeting that I talked about on September first with the higher education and key employers. That's actually something, and I don't want to, I've never promised anything, you know, that, you know, I obviously can't deliver on. This is definitely a talking point. It's going to be addressed at September first, and it's gonna be brought up at the Business Alliance. The consensus is, we need it. We need it, let's just be, let's just cut to the chase, we need it. Now. Now, with that said, you don't want to overlook, you've got with the Poochy Technical in Emerys, you've got Marion Technical in Ocal. Do you do satellite offices? Do you just kind of go at it your own and have your own, you know, obviously, there's a transportation situation if you have, you know, students in one area trying to get them back and forth. There's a lot of moving parts, it's just like the broadband situation where I talked about your public-private partnerships. But it's being looked at, and it's, it's, yeah, we need it, but how do you get there, so.
Are you aware that there are students locally that are driving to the Taylor Technical?
Exactly, yep. And unfortunately, transportation and education is one of those, it doesn't just go to the, to the VOTECs. I mean, you're talking about even if you want a CDL, where's your closest CDL facility? You know, are you going to Sample, are you going to Roadmasters up in Jacksonville? So really training, technical, transportation's an issue, so it is being looked at. And I promise you that something will come of it, I just don't know what yet, because we haven't even had this initial discussion. But it's been evolving, trust me.
It's been a long time.
Probably much longer than I've been here, so yeah, I understand the angst.
Any other questions today?
Hey, something, thank you for upstanding County Board, and well, you have taken the last year.
Appreciate it.
You've come a long way, and I do appreciate it.
Appreciate it, thank you.
I see Wilson Hospital and the project for, I appreciate you working with us both.
I wish I had an update on that. Basically, I've been kind of communicating between the finance arm and the hospital, and basically, finance has, we've given them everything. Now let's see where the, kind of the chips fall, and the hospital says, we're kind of number crunching, we're looking over this and see if our numbers match up with ours, so. But it is, it's, it's, we'll just say in the works, and hopefully, next time, I, which will be in November, hopefully, I'll have an update by then. Ms. Ken, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm delighted you said Wilson Hospital, that leads me to asking, what is the status of the Sheeplin Hospital? Is it alive or dead or in between?
It's one of those that, I guess hiatus would be the best way of putting it. It hasn't gone away, but certainly, the amount of activity at this point is not favorable, we'll just say, and we'll just, I kind of, you know, read between the lines to that. But yeah, it's, it's not dead, but it certainly doesn't have a strong pulse right now, yeah, yeah. Doesn't have a strong pulse, but we're, I don't think it's getting the paddles out yet, but, but, yeah. Probably, just, just leave it there.
Thank you, David.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Shanda, look, we're still waiting on IT for.
Well, I think as a courtesy to Mr. Coons, I'm going to call for a brief adjournment or a brief recess, so we can round out IT, because I don't want that gentleman to have to sit here all day.
No, I wonder if David's before.
Okay.
It's another agenda I need to have later.
Okay.
It's a photo that he would show.
Okay, all right, nevermind. Oh, I thought you were, okay, I thought you were waiting to leave.
Just laughing.
I was wondering what you had, what you have the computer checking. Okay, nevermind, I stayed quick. All right, moving on. We have Duvera Privilege on the agenda, but I don't see Davis or anybody come from the rich.
What they needed, what they needed to do was, they came to the board some time back with the change orders and the construction and the task order. And the change, the change orders and the task order were approved, but they changed their name. And their contractor then would provide, they can't do that, your approval, so that's, there's an assignment letter here that needs to be approved by a board. So that the chair, well, actually, so Mr. Moody can sign the task order, they really didn't even need to bring the task order to me all, based on the contract, so. I'm not sure why they have the approval of the task order, that's already been done. But at least the assignment letter needs to be approved so we can.
Is that something we can do?
We don't need him.
You, right here, a motion to approve the assignment letter transitioning from Privilege to Duvera Privilege. The organization by Mr. Woods, second by Mr. Rock Meeks, we're going to further discussion. All in favor, please see if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Moody?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, it's that time of year again, we have an agreement with Par Rigs in Ingram for our Otterton services. And it's time for, in that agreement, it allows for automatic renewals for three-year terms. And that's what your request is today, approval of amendment to the agreement between Leaky County and Par Rigs and Ingram LLC to extend for an additional three years of Otterton services. Mrs. Brown has looked at that, signed off on it. And the amount, the amount in 2015 was a hundred and nineteen thousand per year. That is a second out for 2016 in their proposal. And then for the succeeding years, 2016, nineteen thousand, 2017, a hundred and two thousand, and 2018, a hundred and twenty-five thousand. And now this, this covers all of your elected officials, the Sheriff's Office, Tax Collector, property supervisor, supervisor, and the.
Ms. Ken?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to know why that is automatic, that they get an extension. Why that isn't a bid item?
We had one out for bid previously and still remain with the same fund, so it's.
Fine, but so far so good, but if I really didn't have an automatic extension in this agreement, now that I find them interesting to put in my.
Well, there's an out clause for either, either party, but between the finance office and all, it's just recommended that our affiliation and association with them has been very well. So there's really no purpose in going out for bid.
If I can clarify, it's not an automatic extension, that's why this meeting is here. It allows for extensions, but the board has to approve those, so that's, that's why we're here, it's not an automatic.
Yeah.
The increase in cost things can be automated.
Unfortunately, that's true of everything. Ms. Tony?
Even those that's firm has changed names with reorganization and so forth, how many years have we been with this firm, Freddie?
Many years, because before that, it was Davis-Munk, and then when they merged with Par.
Right.
This, this actually went into, two thousand and seven.
Two thousand and seven.
So it renewed in ten and it renewed in thirteen and that's.
But with Davis-Munk, how far back, we go years back?
I'm sure, yeah.
So evidently, this firm is.
And Davis-Munk, they've been around, they were affiliated, and Ms. Martha is still, she was with Davis-Munk.
Yes.
But they do a lot of Gilchrist, well, they do Gilchrist County, they do Dixie County, they do some of the cities in conjunction with Beach of Edmonds as far as like City of Chief and stuff, so.
And well, I might get, because if I have a question, I can figure it out, and I can call Martha.
Yes.
And she answers it, or explains it to me.
We do that many times, I will tell you, there's like only call, you know, it's kind of like our labor attorney or somebody, you know, they all, always, and will come over actually, if we need them.
Another question. Mr. Freddie, I believe you said that this covers all of the departments in the county? How are they contributing toward the bottom line?
That would be a Sheila question on how the budget goes as far as what the sheriff contributes.
So they do all kick into, to this figure that you mentioned, of the, all the departments are, are contributing toward the cost.
Well, the elected officials.
Elected officials.
Yeah, the elected officials. So when they come in, they'll go out and they'll, they'll be at the sheriff's office, or they'll be upstairs in the tax collector's office, in their branches. So yes, it's all inclusive of the county, not the school board naturally, but.
Right, but the five constitutional officers.
And they have remained the same issue for this coming year as they have this past year.
We have a motion, right here, second? Sorry. We have a motion and a second, before we vote, I'd like to add, considering the amount stays the same for the two thousand and sixteen year, I don't see a problem with we're doing, but we have to do three years, or can we, you said we can.
Well, Eric, each side's got an out, but they, in the original agreement, they called for three years. Really, when you get with a fund, you don't want to be changing every year like we used to do with health insurance, you know? That's.
That wasn't mine.
Yes, ma'am. So anyhow, that's, it's three years, but in the agreement, there's an amount.
Well, I guess we'd have the option to go out and bid next year.
Yes.
Before we see the increase.
Correct.
And just giving you proof, of course, we did, we left a bid, and we did get some bidders. This company that we're talking about today was lowest of the best, for the simple fact that they know our history, we know theirs, so you've got to take that into consideration too.
What I like about them personally is when I call them this, they do represent counties similar to us, I mentioned Dixie and Gilchrist, but also Putnam, Radford, those kind of counties that we look at when we want to compare certain things. So that's always helpful.
All right, well, we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please see if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Second thing I have is the annual request from the, Ms. Dugby, the tax collector on the recapitulation report. For y'all's signature, this is every year. It just says, we, the undersigned members of Board of County Commissioners and Board of County Executive Board hereby certify that we appear to examine and compare each item within the foregoing list. And the tax collector has stricken from the list and made a separate list of such items, which in our judgment shouldn't be collected by the tax collector. That to the best of our knowledge, information, and belief, such list is now correct just in me. So the amount of that is one million, seven hundred and thirty-six thousand, forty-six hundred and fifty-six cents corrections. That covers errors and omissions and solvencys, double assessments, discounts, federal bankruptcies, warrant spending, and county securities. And this is a matter of.
It's a pleasure in board.
Make the move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner John, or second by Commissioner Woods, there any further discussion? All in favor, please see if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Dean?
What you have there is a request from Mrs. Parks, paddling trail coordinator for the Office of Greenways and Trails, and it's a resolution here that I can read for you there that they want to make the Swan River. Through the Attorney there, Chairman?
It's necessary.
Basically, it just designated Swan River as part of the waterway of Greenways and Trails.
We have a motion by Commissioner Rock Meeks, second by Commissioner Woods. Is there any further discussion? Ms. Tony?
What does the, how do the water management districts figure into this?
This really has nothing to do with the water management district there, and it's for the Office of Greenways and Trails, an application to designate the Swan River in Leaky County as a national water trail by the United States Department of Interior. So it's not tied to the water management district.
All right, so think back now, folks, in nineteen forty-eight, when those same folks designated the Fen Holloway as an industrial river. And you know what happened up there. What is this all about?
Yeah, I, I, let me just read the whole thing to you there, Ms.
It's just, designating as a trailway, so it can be documented on the map, and, I mean, that's the way I understood.
It is designated on Bo KumaX, it's a hundred and sixty-six miles long. And I get a little nervous when these people start coming forward with this stuff, because one thing starts and then all of a sudden, it snowballs. And why? I mean, what, then we start with regulations. And the next thing you know, they'll be telling me that I can't put my boat in the water at the Camp Azalea Boat Ramp.
Mr. Ken?
Mr. Chairman, I completely agree with Ms. Collins and what possible restrictions are coming down since that is a federal agency. I don't trust the Florida, we, we live alone, the federal agencies. They don't have given me any reason to distrust them.
Exactly. Thank you, Ms. Ken, after that funny look you gave me on this.
I mean, I read this and understand it to be.
Yeah, it looks innocent in the beginning.
Just, just like the Nature Coast paddle, Saltwater Paddling Trail we have that goes from Jefferson County, from McCullough County all the way down to actually the mouth of the, of the Poochy River, not stopping at the Swan River, like somehow it's a big. I, I don't see any hidden agenda, but.
As long as somebody looked, because it is a fair question.
Yes, I mean, I, I mean, I'll read the letter for the public. Here, this is the letter to Ms. Parks. Dear Ms. Parks, I am contacting you on behalf of Leaky County Board of County Commissioners of Leaky County. To enthusiastically support the efforts of the Department of Environmental Protections Office in Greenways and Trails, application to the Department of the Interior for designating the Swan River as a national water trail. Abundant natural resources, rich history and cultural heritage, providing endless recreation opportunities, make the Swan River an outstanding candidate for this prestigious designation. National Water Trail designation will increase awareness of the river, provide economic benefits to local communities, and provide an opportunity to educate the public about the significance of supporting conservation of natural resources. Swan River has public boat access sites in Leaky County encompassed by the scope of the project maintained by Leaky County. We give approval of the sites being included in the designation application. Sincerely, John Meeks, Chairman of the County Board of County.
Who's Ms. Parks?
She is the paddling trail coordinator of the Office of Greenways and Trails, Division of Recreation and Parks, Department of Environmental Protection in Tallahassee.
And DEP approves of the three boat ramps on the Swan River in Leaky County that have been there for years.
They'll be mapped on, on this map.
Well, they already are.
Well, they're going to create a map, and, I mean, that's. And now that things are, things are like more interactive now than they used to be used to, you've got a paper map, you know, that says this is the Swan River Paddling Trail, and these are the points of interest along the way. Now they have this stuff where it's on computers and on your, on your tablet or your cellphone or whatever, and you can look all this stuff up. And so sometimes they have to, they have to request permission to be able to use that information.
The Swan River Water Management District puts out one of the finest paddling guides to the Swan River from all the way up in Georgia, all the way to the mouth, with everything in between. This is just one more way to spend government money, and I think these folks have already demonstrated that they like to spend a lot of money. How many of you ever see people on the bike trail, Hoover and Sheeple, who are on the way to Fanning Springs? How much is it used? I'm going to be really nasty here, I'm telling you, I live out there, I travel that way, I see it. I also live on the Swanee, I don't like hearing this, I do not like, why wasn't there anything, any publicity about this before now?
We just got the letter in this past week.
Ah, okay. Now, trust me, I'm against it, and I live on the Swanee.
I've got no problem with the resolution. The only problem that I have too, be it, is your concern, where they all, where the Blutons coming out of Georgia, they want to blame Leaky County for them.
Yes.
I don't have a problem with that.
Yes.
But there again, when you sit back and look and figure out how many counties the Swan River goes through? You know, that, that's a lot of area that people use, and I've got no problem if the resolution has it is written.
Mister Chairman, I should read the resolution into the record so that everybody understands what it says.
Resolution twenty sixteen oh six nine, resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Levy County, Florida, supporting the designation of the Swan River in Levy County, Florida as a national water trail. Whereas the benefits of the designation of the Swan River in Levy County as a national water trail include national recognition as a recreational destination, national promotional maps through websites, increased tourism, and increased revenue for local businesses. Whereas our region benefits from promoting nature-based recreation opportunities, especially paddling, biking, hiking, equestrian activities, hunting, fishing, and wildlife duty, to increase health benefits to our local communities and encourage youth and families to participate in outdoor activities. And whereas the region benefits from promoting the rich culture and history contained within the watershed of the Swan River, drawing visitors eager to explore its history, historic legacy. And whereas the Swan River National Water Trail offers a unique opportunity for residents and visitor to explore an unspoiled pristine area of Florida and Georgia. And whereas the cultural, historical, and natural resources area are some of the major in the southeast. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Levy County, Florida, endorses the state of Florida also Greenways and Trails application for designation of the Swan River in Levy County as a national water trail by the United States Department of the Interior. Mr. Dean.
Who came up with the verbiage? Ms. Parks, you know, and send it.
It's Tony.
Upset.
How many other counties have been contacted or, uh, or, or involved or had a request? Okay, that, that would be a question. One question, so how many other counties were? It's what?
As I said, it sounds like all this talk was going on, it sounds like it's turning into a conspiracy against Levy County.
A, a conspiracy against Levy County?
That's what it sounds like, everything is all pointed towards Levy County with the comments that are made.
Why? Because that's where we live, that's where it's being brought up. What do you mean, why does it sound like a conspiracy?
I, this is John brought up earlier about the kayaking trail and all like that there. I can tell you, from being out there on the gulf as much as I do, you see a lot of people that are following that trail as they downloaded with all the GPS points and everything else, going through the different campsites there. And, uh, there's a lot of people that visit and spend money in Levy County from looking at those things.
That's not the, that's not the argument. The argument is, the question is, what does this alliance do to the future of the Swan River where Levy County is concerned? You know, a, as, as an organization, as the president of an organization does an awful lot to promote the Swan River. Okay, we're, we're right there with promoting history. I don't see any other groups doing that, and I don't see where this group is gonna do it either.
Yes, sir.
One question is Meeks, there's an addition by Rockneaks, second by Lily Rooks, and he said.
There's still discussion.
Okay.
There's a lot of it.
You don't even live in this county, do you?
Are you talking to me? Hey, hey, hey.
No, really.
I mean, I don't see anything in this, this resolution or any of this letter that is binding, um, to us. I mean, I, I read this as a, a designation of a national water trail that will be promoted nationally. Through, uh, you know, websites, uh, print media, whatever. The same way that, you know, we have the, the paddling trail around the coast, we have other historic trails, be it the DeSoto Trail, or be it, you know, uh, I mean, I, maybe I'm naive, but I didn't see anything in here that was beyond a, a way to further promote our region, people outside of our region, to get them to come and use our paddling trails, use our river, shop for our businesses and, and spend tax dollars here in Levy County.
Mister Chairman, if there's no, if there's no timeline or nothing, we can certainly bring this back at the next meeting after checking and seeing the Swan River. I'm sure every county that touches it has got to be involved in this to make it a national trail, I would think. I mean, Dixie's gotta be involved and, you know, just right on that chain. We can either bring it back or y'all can go ahead and act.
It's up to the motioners if they wanna rescind their motion or we can go forth in the vote. I, I don't care either way.
Well, since there is concern. Let's table it and find out more, try to answer their questions and bring it back to the next meeting.
So you can rescind your motion? Right, you rescind your second. All right, we'll come back with some more information.
And some more comments for people who live in the group.
Yes, sir.
Mister Stevens, did I, uh, understand you correctly that the pollution's coming out of Georgia and Levy County's getting blamed for it?
Yes.
Why?
You gotta ask the people in Tallahassee and Washington for that. Because it's the, the DEP is, is putting all the pressure on Levy County because we are the mountains of gold.
Well, is anyone sitting up there fighting for us?
Past and present, yes, sir, because this has been going on for quite a few years.
Every time I go to Tallahassee, I ask them, when are they gonna do something? The state of Georgia, and more importantly, the city of Valdosta, and their sewer treatment facility. We, we've been told, well, they're building a new one, but they're building a new one literally six hundred feet from where the old one was at.
Well, the reason I asked that question, sir.
What are they accomplished by doing that, but?
The reason I asked that question is, you know, I don't care where the pollution's coming from, I just don't want Levy County blamed for it.
But that, but that is the, that is the point of contention of this current board and the past boards with all of this stuff coming out from DEP. They want to attack the mouth of, of the Swanee and not head toward where it's actually generated at.
Mr. Dean.
And this is what, uh, Swan River Water Management District has discussed many times, but have never enforced. And God help us, if Levy County were to directly pollute something, we, we would be done on us in a second.
Well.
Thank you, Ms. Lily, for saying what you did. I regret, and Mister Meeks, I greatly appreciate that we paid for this mess.
It's a, um, you know, it's, it's, it's a delicate situation, you got two states working, not working together. We've got the same problem on the Chattahoochee River, where they have all the water dammed up to survive the city of Atlanta, and they're, and they're drying up the, the rivers, they're drying up estuaries.
So much.
We gotta have some relief from the federal government, remember that whenever you go vote.
I do.
Mr. Tony.
It's a little disconcerting to take friends and relatives that are visiting down to this beautiful river and stand there and watch what's floating down it. Okay? And I just find it very hard to believe that in this day and age, that can't be stopped. I know the Swan River Water Management District has people out on the river, especially times like now, when the river is up and it's running very fast. You would be delighted to see what you'll see floating down the river. Things that you don't want to think about, truly. And, and I, I sympathize with what Mr. Stevens is saying, because upstate, they don't care, it's past them, they don't care. And for those of you who are in the river a lot, let's talk about the saltwater intrusion at the mouth. That is a real problem. I'm not gonna see it in my lifetime, but our children will. It's moving right up that river. It's pretty discerning to, to see dead palm trees and just see the trunk. And it's moving in, moving in. So, and you, there were three letters that you mentioned in what you read, and I don't remember exactly what the contents was, but those are scary ones.
Well, there was one letter in there.
DEP, which, was it the cover letter that had DEP in it?
That was the letter that, that we were sending to Ms. Parks.
Okay. And is that Florida DEP?
Yes, ma'am.
I rest my case.
Laura.
Good morning.
A hard jump out of the pool.
Good morning, exactly, I, I have no conspiracies, I have no, I have told like two minutes. So, the first thing I would like to do is thank all of you. For your confidence and trust in me, because I realized a few days ago that this is the seventh time I am bringing state aid to my work. So, I, I'm feeling like time's just flying by, but seven times is really energizing. So, it is, um, state aid to libraries, it's a grant that needs your approval and signature. It is our entire operating budget. But what I would say too, in whatever y'all wanna think about it, um, we've been talking a lot about Tallahassee. And all of y'all know that we send postcards, we take buses, we do everything we can to inform state aid to libraries, okay? It's gone from thirty-three million to twenty-one million.
Oh.
Which is one dollar above what the state has to do to obtain federal funds. So we are at the lowest we have ever been, and we'll still figure out a way to make it. But I would appreciate it very much if y'all would approve the grant, the application for the grant.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Rockneaks and second by Commissioner Rooks. Tony.
Does the library system have any lobbyists?
Actually, do we do?
What are they doing?
Um.
Sounds like not a real job.
Maybe Hillary Clinton.
You know, um, a lot of things are done, kind of like when Napland was cut one year.
Yes.
It was cut in the middle of the night. I mean, red line, the lobbyists found out about it in the Florida Library Association. It's, it's just, we do what we can, but, you know, sometimes we just can't do it.
Are these people being paid a salary? The lobbyists are being paid to go lobby?
Yes, by the Florida Library Association.
They need to be fired, you need to get new people.
We also have fat and small county that bought for money for this lobbying.
But then.
Did I say that?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't think I said library, you're right.
But the large counties, the large counties get it? The large counties just get the funds, is that it?
No, the, the overall funding has been cut.
Everything.
Yeah, and the, so the, the pot has gotten smaller for everybody. Now, the larger counties have obviously more resources because they have county funds they can use to put in the library system that's on this the mountain.
Well, like Alachua County, they're a special district, they're a taxing authority for their library.
Uh, yes.
Yes.
And we had an opportunity to do that back in two thousand and did it, which is sad. Nineteen ninety-nine, actually.
There you go. Um, but I know that Commissioner Meeks has studied the, uh, formula for state aid. And a part of it is based upon, you know, the mileage of the county, it's also based on, on the local contributions, which include our salaries that the commission board pays. Um, also, the city of Williston, the city of Shekel, the city of Cedar Peak, and the, the E.S. Rock. So, we combine all of that for our local contributions, and of course, the cities are down too. So, you know, which way we're going, you, you know, if we had X amount of funding, we would have twice as much money, but we're not gonna get to that point. So, it's kind of useless to worry about it, but there is a very, very specific method that they use to, you know, allocate money to different counties. Okay, are we, are we approved?
We have a motion in a second, I don't think we voted yet, yes.
Do we know what the amount of Levy County is, or approximately, or?
Um, the amount that's coming here, the estimated amount is a hundred and nine thousand, and that's the estimate.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor, please see if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Here it is.
Shout, three minutes, okay, thank you. She can't have that kind of life slayer thing, you know?
The river got a minute every time.
Good morning.
Good morning, Matt.
Yeah.
Good, how are you?
Good. Uh, we went out for bid for the Devil's Hammock Tech Station, um, our annual renewal thing, and, uh, we only got one bidder, which was the Bose Resources of LA, and Ross City Bar, they give you, uh, a bid of twenty-one thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. Make the move, fast head, we're ready.
We have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please see if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Matt, is this, uh, is, I mean, this guy is, is he like a one-man operation?
No, he, he has, uh, performed, uh, one from Williston, one from Shekel, uh, they've done it several years, uh, actually, every time, he's hard to do it.
I was reading this app, reading it, reading this application, thinking this is kinda odd, that guy's got his own LLC and he wants to come out on our check station.
Right. He, he, uh, contracts three water management districts too, he does some, um, filing and different things for them also.
He uses quite a, more than one check-in stations to do recession. Oh, my, uh, the question I got, I don't get, maybe I got that here, but as far as the, where are we at with the grant? As far as matured or, I knew at one time I had asked about.
San Antonio.
What was it called?
About the management agreement through the Paul Grant, are we?
The Devil's Hammock.
Oh, yeah, do I know what about it?
Where are we at with it? Are we still bound to, to, to that, or are we able to?
Yeah, I think we are, we have, we've had it, um, we're actually in the process of updating it, we're working with the state and updating it, making some modifications to it from what was originally agreed upon back in, what was it in, uh?
Oh, two thousand.
Early, early two thousand.
That's a long time ago.
There, yeah, there were things that we thought we could do, but we found that we couldn't like physically constrain from doing, so we, we worked with the state and did an alternative to that, so it's still, we still have to buy by.
I was just curious, like, on the, the Andrew's grain size, you know, where that, where the closed gate is in there in the middle. Can we move out on down to the, to the gate at the park? You know, where people can hunt there in hunting season, you know, run on with their, you know, it's about three or four more miles up there. Had a lot of people ask that, but when it comes time, I'll ask.
Right, well, and I think they've done that buffer system where you have straight hold it, you know, and that kind of stuff.
Well, there's been pieces of, of archers, you know, something like that, where you can, you know, it's got a little, uh, you can charge it.
Right.
I, I don't know, I'm asking that question, it's kind of possible.
That'd be something we'll have to talk to the back people about when we get back home.
Is that the state or something?
Uh, that's the state, where we got Paul Grant, the roots.
All right, thank you, sir.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah, and there is people hunting on the other side of the river.
Yes. On.
On the Adena Springs side.
Yes.
So, I mean, they, they gotta hunt right up there too, you know, where our corner is at that far.
When they want to.
Yeah, actually, they are. So you might throw that out there.
Right. And I don't know.
And that's kind of where I'm.
I don't know what the split was, once I wasn't here, when the grant started, so I don't know what they told them they were gonna do for unhunting, rind activities, seventy, thirty, or both moved up.
What have you got in your chambers?
I, nothing, I'm just gonna make a guess. We can't hunt out there in this place, but now there, you know, there are people hunting right up there beside it, so why, why is it closed up?
I'm really gonna check that out.
Right. It's gotta make sure we draw time up in there.
Yeah, I'm trying, maybe, what do you think, what do you think? I thought some agents would build a run dog or what?
I want, I want, thank you for having the trucks come down in the spring.
Right, that's what we're here for.
I mean, that's such a blessing.
We're doing our best to get it all under control. A lot of work out there, and we'll continue to do it. Thank, thank y'all for your support.
Please don't bury that town, it's a lot of them, it's made of.
Thanks, Chairman Marshall.
If I can help y'all, let me know.
I will.
Tell me where the truck's at.
Alicia.
Morning.
Morning. Well, the state is requesting approval from the board and the chairman's signature on amendment three between Leaky County and the town of Englets. This amendment will provide for additional coverage area in addition to fire districts number one and number two for the town's obligations. The additional coverage area is district number three, and this will be effective October first, two thousand sixteen.
The motion by Commissioner Rooks, seconded by Commissioner Brock Meeks, for those of you who are not familiar, district three would be the incorporated area around Alton. Any questions? All in favor, please see if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Oh, welcome, John. Do you want to do the non-adjunct items first?
Yeah, if I may, I'd like to kind of rearrange how it's set up on ours. Uh, but first, I'd like to touch base on, two weeks ago, when we did the work on C three thirty-nine. Uh, it was, I mean, it turned out excellent. I mean, as far as, uh, the inspection, the inspector actually said from Tallahassee all the way to here, he says the best he's ever seen. And, I am truly gifted as far as working with the men and women that we have out there. They are an amazing group. Uh, I was, uh, fortunate enough to get in the mud with them and, you know, be right there with them the whole time. And, they are some incredible people that we have out there. Uh, that being said, I'd also like to recognize a couple of people on the outlets. I'd like to, uh, recognize John McDonald, uh, excuse me, director of the EOC. He, uh, allowed us to use his message boards so we could, you know, help, uh, as far as the public notification. Let them know that this was going to be closed, uh, you know, ahead of schedule. It helped out in, you know, actually the notification of it being closed. So, John McDonald, I, I'd like to thank him for allowing us to use his message boards. I'd also like to thank, uh, Sheriff Bobby McCowen and his staff also. Uh, we got ahold of, uh, his dispatch, asked them if they would notify the ambulance and fire department in case any kind of emergency came up. Then, you know, they would actually have that reroute and they helped, you know, in that coordination. I'd also like to, uh, bring up some things that we're doing right now. Uh, as everyone knows, we've gotten quite a bit of rain here recently. And, yes, ma'am, and it is, uh, yeah, uh, Matt's going to be very busy, uh, very, very busy. And, yeah, and, you know, that, that being said, uh, Cedar Key Heights, we're doing some work in Cedar Key Heights, Cedar Key Old Home Village right now. Uh, we're, we're doing some, actually cleaning out some ditches. We're improving on our maintenance schedule as far as, once this water kind of proceeds out, we're going to go in there and we're going to readjust a little bit. We're also coordinating with, uh, FDMP on their ditches out there on State Road twenty-four. Uh, I've already met with them once, and they're going to, they're planning on cleaning out their ditches also. So, another event like this happens, then, you know, we'll get that water out from those sub business that much quicker. And, if y'all have any questions about anything, uh, that you can think of right now?
I just have to thank y'all. We had a new team in Leaky County. Alice, Casey, Jesse. Years ago, this little drug on and on and on, with nothing getting done. Just me up there going around saying, "I'm looking into it." We had an incident in Cedar Key from the rain. And, Casey calls me and asks me if I can come down and meet him. So, I went down there, and here's the road department already working to alleviate the flooding that's actually in this man's house. And, two years ago, we've been standing around, well, we'll figure out something until it dies out. It's so, I was so excited when I seen that it was already being enacted again. And then, I asked you about April. The next day, I go out there, and most of the roads already dry, and all the drinking, the water off of it. People down there were excited because they got to see something actually happening. I went around to Cedar Key Mobile Village and talked to some people there, and they said the water was already starting to drop. And the water kept on getting... I want to thank y'all so much.
And, and Miss Lillard, we are in Otter Creek right now. I've forgotten to mention that.
I was there at their meeting last night.
Yeah.
And they were so excited about that.
I think we just walked that grid all with a better time.
Woo, it's gonna, it's gonna get its workout, and thank goodness y'all approved that, because it is, it is going to get a tremendous workout.
And then, putting everything into a maintenance program. And down in Englets and Yankee Town, we can use it down there. And, we may not be going through all this, the people may not be going through.
The key is to do it whenever it's not heat.
Right, and, and, and come back on three thirty-nine. Now, when, when it dries out on three thirty-nine, we're going to address the other bridge. It's got some, uh, pollens underneath it that needs to be addressed, uh, and...
I want those of what we were fixing.
Well, we, we, we've actually got two, we've got two bridges on three thirty-nine, but, you know, the, the great thing about it is we have a, a pattern now for replacing these. And, it's amazing. I mean, it, it really is amazing. If you hadn't looked at it, I'd actually say good look at it, and, and I'm very impressed. Uh, recently, you know, a gentleman here at work, they come up with this pattern, and he sent it to the state, the state approved it. And, when the inspector came through, he looked at it, he was amazed.
That's what's the most amazing, or not the most amazing, because we have some very talented, very...
We have very talented people.
But to come up with an idea that was new, different from what other people had done, to say, "This is going to work, and then this will be taking time and money to do it this way."
Yes, sir.
And for the state, and usually the state, they'll say, "Oh, no, 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 you got to do it the way we've always done it." And, and for them to say, "Yes, this does make sense."
And I, I really want to thank Alice, you know, uh, when I ordered the pipe originally, it took, uh, one, just about say, seven days to get here. Alice gets on the phone with him? I don't know if she used that sweet voice or that bummer voice. But it was here the next day. But she's an amazing person, obviously, she truly is. She gets, she gets it done. Uh, there's no other person that I've seen do that. I mean, it's amazing, and I thank her very much for, uh, doing what she does. Uh, that all being said, like I say, all the other departments that assisted us on that, thank you very much also. Y'all were there when we needed you, and, and we greatly appreciate that. Sounds like someone is looking for us. But, anyway, so we thank y'all very much, too. It, it doesn't get said, it doesn't get said enough. Yes, the red department's identified as being out there, but there's so other, I mean, so many other departments that still assist. And, and unfortunately, we don't recognize them like we should, but like I say, we're hoping to correct that in the future. You know, and every time that they can get that assistance, we want to recognize it, because it means a lot to us, a lot.
And in Cedar Key, you have the fire department?
Yes, ma'am.
The water department?
Yes, ma'am.
Police department.
Yes, and all of those, like Miss Lillard, and like I just mentioned, you know, sometimes we, we don't recognize them, and, and it needs to be corrected on that. Uh, Cedar, Cedar Key was a great, uh, help to us out there. They were, as everyone says, yawnin' on the spot. Uh, when we asked, you know, for something, they were there, they helped us out with actually, uh, many of, um, uh, Traco. And, we were allowed, you know, they gave us that permission to use it to be able to, uh, dig a little hole there. They come in there, also, we had a, a trash pump, they come in with a bigger trash pump to assist us. And it's sending out there quick, fast, and in a hurry. So, there's so many other departments that, you know, we had just basically come together, and that's the way you have to do it. You just need to come together and work and assist each other, and we love it, we truly do love it. And I thank y'all for, let me mention that. Uh, I'd like to change this around a little bit. Uh, I would actually like to go Bee first, and then Alice, do you want to look at the table here? Um, I request, uh, approval for resolution two thousand sixteen dash zero forty-two to rename Northeast Fortieth Avenue, AKA LCR one oh four, AKA Olive Drive to U Pick Lane.
Would you like me to find it here?
Uh, on this road, i- i- if you want, uh, on this road, we, the reason it is coming up is, you know, uh, another AKA, is there's actually a blueberry farm that's out here on this road. And, uh, to help identify it, you know, uh, and obviously, it's very successful, uh, from what I've gathered so far, it's very successful. People going there and picking the blueberries, and so forth, so on. Uh, they would actually like for this road to also be identified as U Pick Lane. And, in that way, uh, am I touching this right, as far as they were going to put that out there in notification as U Pick Lane?
They're all, they're, they're not wanting to change the name of the road.
Right.
If I change your address, I contact the post office, nobody has to change their address.
Right.
All we need is just a sign of this, is U Pick Lane. They call them blueberry farmers out there that have been real successful. And now they're putting in a U Pick pumpkin patch and a maze for children, the kids who can. And, they just want this green strip sign that says U Pick Avenue, and they can put it on Google. So, if you're in Miami, or if you're in Jacksonville, then you want to come in the weekend and pick blueberries and go send them to the buyers or whatever. You just put U Pick Lane, and it'll show exactly where it's at. That's when the managed blueberry farmer sat me down and asked me if it could be done, because that was the reason behind it.
And I, I plead to, you know, bring that, you know, uh, that extra amount in, in Leaky County, you know, a little bit more revenue. You know, you never know, hotel stays, restaurants, uh, so forth, so on, so... You know, we always, you know, mention how we try to build up Leaky County. I believe this is just another way to build up Leaky County and, and show something that's very successful.
You need to go to have pies, to cook pies and jam, that thing, it's a real, real blueberry type. Just like to have up in the mountains, but... They have milk cakes, ice cream.
Where is it?
Mountain.
Where, where?
Right now.
It's a hundred and four, you know where like the Cracker House, where the Cracker House, Etheridge Cracker House is.
It's almost three sixteen.
Yeah, yeah.
You know where Etheridge Cracker House is? The what? Etheridge Cracker House.
It, it used to be known as Line George Road.
Used to be White?
Not this Line George Road.
I don't know. You know, while they're in another...
That's, that's AKA officially, though.
Hey, you got to remember, I live on the west side of the county. Red, white, and blue, blueberries. Yes.
It's behind that seven...
That BP station.
Straight to the end, you got to turn back right, then turn back left, and it's down there on the right.
Ah, okay, gotcha.
Say that again real quick, three times.
Real quick, three times, I didn't do that. Is that the red, white, blue farm?
Yeah.
East Willis. Okay, near Frogs?
No.
That's too south.
Hey, just down, Tony, just down from my house, you know where the food ranch is? On the other side.
I use that phrase all the time. Okay, gotcha. That's one of my, get off the main one. All right, down with you, down with you.
Hey, two can do it.
Two can do it.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please see if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, I'm going to do a second.
I'm going to do a non-adjunct item first, please.
All right. Motion, we have a second, all in favor, see if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? carries.
Thank you. Okay, I got an email yesterday stating that we are allowed to use our impact fee money to go toward a grant to widen and resurface Showhouse Road.
Yay!
Passing the gallows, hang this motion.
All right.
I don't know what I've heard more about Showhouse Road, or every other issue combined in the county.
So, that being said, would you guys like to vote on our lowest bid to resurface the project without the bridge and culvert extensions? It just will include the guardrails around the bridge and the reflectors and all that kind of stuff.
But it doesn't put the light?
Yes, definitely includes the lighting. No parking, anyone, sorry. It'll be, what you get from eighteen foot to twenty-two foot, uh, a roadway.
That's enough.
So, it's, it's going to be a lot of...
I mean, Jeff, we won't, we won't pump that out.
No, Whitehurst, Whitehurst was our lowest bidder.
Whitehurst.
Yeah, at one million, three hundred ninety-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifty cents, if we did.
How much money do we have?
Um, we will be using five hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred dollars of impact fee money. Um, because we have eight hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighteen cents, each for a grant.
And we're doing the, we're doing the road widening, but not extending the culverts?
Not extending the culverts of the bridge, but we're going to put guardrails and reflectors, signage, and all that kind of stuff.
We have a motion to approve by Ms. Rooks.
Sure.
Seconded by Commissioner Joyner. Is there any further discussion?
I just want to thank Alice for staying on this. Because this is a long time coming.
Yes.
And you did an excellent job. I am so proud of you.
Does, does the motion in second include the warning from the chairman to sign the agreement, the standard agreement that the... Okay.
Second, stand to that.
Sure.
Second, stand to that.
Sure.
Is there any further discussion?
Are you renaming the road to the Long Day Lane?
Uh, I'll tell you what, I want to rename it to whenever we're not in.
Did you what?
And I want to name it to, now that we're going to fix it. All right, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor, please see if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, now, that could be genuine. Okay, my first item, I would like to request permission to accept numbers for our yearly bid to operate our supplies for Leaky County Road Department. And I'll go down the list. Um, our asphalt and culverts, our lowest bidder was Central Materials. Um, our culvert pipe, those Gulf Atlantic culverts. Our tar, we have no bid for our tar. Um, motor oil was Jack Becker Distributors. Porta potties was Jones Plumbing. Safety items was Safety Zone Products. Sign materials was Light Enterprises, Osborne, and Universal. Sod was Sheer Quality Farms, and fracking was Jenkins Paints. Those are all the low bidders that we had this year.
Bob, Lillard, I think there is...
We have a motion in a second.
I'll second it.
We already have, Brock already seconded it. Miss Lillard, any more? Uh, wrong English, I'm sorry. Lillard's seconded it. I know we had a motion in a second. Uh, my, my only question is, um, and we do this every year, we always do asphalt and culvert mix together. Can we separate that next year? Because Whitehurst never bids on culvert mix. And so, it always puts us in a precarious situation. Even if they were the low bidder on the asphalt, they don't supply the culvert mix, so you have to go somewhere else for that.
Right.
So, I mean, that, that's my thought now. If everybody else don't want to do that, that's fine, but, uh, where, for the record, where's Central Materials located?
They are in McCantsa.
Okay, and Whitehurst asphalt plant... Okay, and Whitehurst asphalt plant is? So, I mean, I'm just thinking for fifty cent. I mean, I guess.
But some of our paving projects for McCantsa is a little bit closer.
Well, you know, a few years ago, what we had done is we accepted both bids and depending on location, we had used either one.
Depending on the short, it's a truck for fifty cent a ton.
And, and the only other thing that, that makes me question something, if we have an issue that comes up immediately, Whitehurst is requesting a minimum of twenty tons and a five day notice.
Right, and, and Central never has. He lets us get whatever we want, when we want it. Um, Whitehurst has never been that easy to get.
But that's on delivery though, it's not on. I read that they've been on more than twenty tons of delivery, my skin. Cause I see they bid it delivered, picked up or delivered. So I, I read that as the, we had to keep five minutes notice.
But, uh, I would simply suggest we vote just depending on the location of the town. And, and if we're able to get the minimum tonnage and the five day notice. And, and as long as they didn't hold us up on the project, that we needed to get done too.
So if they were willing to work with us, that we were closer to them, we square.
Well, we got a new motion to reflect that.
No, that's just my simple suggestion. I can say yes or no to it.
You accept that amendment? I'm content with that. Would you say like that? All right. So what are we gonna do? What are we gonna do about car?
Um, car, it's, car is gonna be an issue because not, people don't make what we use, so we're gonna get a whole new brand of car. And we're gonna sit down with our woman, James Horn, and get one that he likes. That was an issue.
Which we've got a company right now that just now, uh, actually took a sample of our car. And they're trying to do a comparison. They're gonna get back with us. They haven't done that yet, but they, uh, just now took, uh, yeah, about, give or take, total, five gallons. So they can test it, see what, you know, what kind of consistency it, you know, exists on it. And then they're gonna get back with us and see if they can match that or improve on it. So, uh, until we get that information back, we'll all, uh.
No problem. I just, I didn't know, you know, we're no bid.
Where's that?
That, that I could not tell you. I was out there with them. I actually, you know, when we got, uh, car, but.
Well, I think they're in McCantsa.
Yeah.
And did they all come into that business?
I haven't heard from them in several years, so they very well might have. Cause they haven't even bid in the past.
Well, we have a motion and a second, uh, and we had an amendment. It was accepted. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. If you carries.
Now, my last item. Um, to request approval of resolution twenty sixteen forty-nine, offering the execution of amendment to traffic signal maintenance and composition agreement with FDOT for the maintenance and continuous operation of our traffic signals and devices in Levee County. Um, what it says is we have agreement with FDOT for all of our flashing weekends, our flashing signs, we get reimbursed every year. Um, and we're updating our, amending our current resolution, which is twenty fifteen twenty to update the authorizations and authority to execute and submit annual dividends to the agreement as amended for this agreement. So that's what this is about.
Alice, let's come call and talk to them. Do they have different, uh, flashing lights?
Um, which area?
Out there off of, well, three twenty-six, one twenty-one, worth of thirty dollars towards you. Right there for you. Going down three twenty-six. That's a, that's a small. When you top those hills, you see it at night, like, no problem.
Right.
Morning time, but it's foggy like this morning. We need, if they were possibly just changed from, if they have one bigger than that one, it would certainly be great.
Yeah, I'm talking with, uh, uh, Chief on FDOT right now about, uh, some stop signals right there at the intersection of one twenty-one and nineteen.
Yeah.
That stop, uh, flashing stop sign. Got four of them.
That number of days?
Yes, for quite, quite a while ago, but it was, we don't, we don't, I guess, we didn't even go out for bid on that particular material. FDOT's always, uh, supplied it for us. So we were waiting for that material to come in. I just now talked to him this morning, but I will ask him about a bigger.
If they have a light.
Yes, on, uh, for those intersections.
Cause they supply us with the materials unless they have a bigger head to go out there. Cause I understand it is small.
It is, very small.
What's the pleasure of the board? We have a motion in a second to request approval of resolution twenty sixteen oh four nine. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. If you carries.
See what I just told them? Or where would it be done?
It was Casey's sweet boy.
All right, we reached our second public comment section. Is anyone here wanna speak on that public comments? Yes, sir, Mr. Sheffield.
Just to drag us back to something painful for a second, the, the designation of the river to the National Water Trail. Yeah, it sounds innocent enough, it really does. We've all just been burned by one word here or there over the years. You know, somebody says historical and then I can't have a dog unless he wears a powdered wig and coats a musket or something. And I just, I appreciate y'all's tolerance, but we're skittish and with good reason. And, uh, look into it and just make sure it's all, and thank you.
Mr. Sheriff?
I don't have anything this morning, sir. Thank you.
Councilwoman Betty Walker from Chatham?
I would just like to say that we appreciate a lot from the board and staff and from myself very much. We appreciate y'all's continued support of the Levee RRC.
Uh, Councilwoman Winer?
No, just thank you.
Mr. Lippman?
Uh, two things. Uh, this Friday is the opening of high school football season. Uh, there's a home game in Williston, won only four this year. We're on the road pretty much the whole season.
It's not even a real game. So y'all only have three real home games?
Yep.
Wow.
And, uh, the other thing, uh, is the, uh, there is a, uh, an open house, I guess you'd call it, a dedication uh, for the new middle high school on the twenty-third, which is, uh, Saturday a week. And so, uh, you know, look out for that if you care to attend that as well. That's it.
Fire chief, anything back there for me, Lewis?
No.
Chief and fire chief, I know what he's here for. He's here for the pleasure. All right, Mr. Sheriff? Commission reports. Commissioner Joyner?
Uh, Friday night, we, we, they had a council in the middle of the year. Carter store, that will be this Friday night at eight o'clock. Behind Carter store.
Bullback?
It's Bullback for the year. Be a pile of. And, uh, mostly just, just, just for fun. They just gonna be together and have a good time, have a bullback. Nine, nine ten, something getting tottered out, they'll go and ride.
Isn't that Saturday? Saturday?
Saturday, behind Carter store.
Anything else?
That's all I have.
We feel a little bit on the board, Pete. I received the, the request from the city of Cedar. If we own that property, the county does, it's outlined in red. And the city wants to know if they can use this for the parking motorcycles, golf carts, or for fine use of it to stay when the food court starts. I told them that I'm not going, I don't wanna give it to them. I want the county to maintain the same ownership. And I told them that they would have to carry the library duty on it. And they have, they agreed to that.
What about the clearing payment? Are they gonna do that with the list?
They won't have to.
Well, I'm sure the clear first for the bridge stuff and anything.
You're a payman, they get done.
Well, for years, Robert, Robertson was muddling that because at the time, he had, uh, red and white, um, burger shop there. There's since been somebody moved to another bid business and decided on property. But when you're on dog, dog street and you come up and you're looking for a place to park, there may be twelve motorcycles parked. That takes up almost two and a half.
Is this right here?
Let me see it. Is that the water line? Or is that dirt?
Yes, it's probably low tide.
That dirt?
Yeah.
That's all mud. The wind won't act for about high tide.
Underneath that, that's my, sorry, is, is the culvert.
It would be ranked.
Here, it's supposed to be, that's supposed to be a blowout for the, for the marina. And obviously it doesn't work very well.
Well, it's not that big.
Yes.
Yeah, it's actually pretty. They'll take the liability clear and, and get it nice looking and paid like, I'm sure they will, cause they got everything else down. Nice looking, I'm, I'd be all for it. With, with the understanding, it's not their land, it's ours.
I'm not willing to give that. I think it's important that we keep that. With all the details, what was, the city of Cedar, he willing to draft these in agreement? I'm very uncomfortable with just saying we approve it based on their promises without an agreement setting out their responsibilities and things. Were they willing to draft an agreement? I'm gonna go back into my email, I mean, I'll take some, see what they said. The city would take on the library, take it on the lot. I see that, since you get approval. We may have to do it. Given the details that the boards talked about, there should be everything from.
So.
I'll make a motion to agree with Tom DeMille, or I'll wait for you to donate it.
Motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. If you carries. Anything else?
Just to thank you for all of our employees that have been helping alleviate a flood that we've been from the ground. We so appreciate it. And thank you for the show well known. Y'all just don't know what that means.
I think we're gonna have to be able to use that right. No, they don't use it, cause they can't do that. It's so rough.
Yeah, but a lot of, well, I have another project that I'm gonna be working on, but I don't really know about it right now.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir.
Any course this morning?
I hope that everybody got a copy of the letter sent out by America Post of Williston thanking the county for the last, uh, for us paying the tipping fees for their cleanup picks up. We appreciate the letter and you letting know, Mr. Lippman.
I'll let you.
Anything else?
Yep.
All right, um, Mr. Vaughn Lee served on the planning, uh, commission many years and I thank him for his service. But he has asked to, to be, uh, removed. And, um, I'm asking this morning that we appoint Karen Smith to the planning commission. Um, she's a local real estate agent. Her husband is in the, uh, construction business. Um, she's been in Bronson all her life. I think she'd be a, an asset to the planning commission. This morning, I'm asking for permission to.
I'll make a motion. I'll know, I'll make, I'll make, you make a motion, I'll, I'll say it. You gotta talk about it, boy.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Yes, sir.
All right, so that's out of the way. Uh, something I missed last meeting, and I'm very sorry for. Is, uh, we have some, some people in our, uh, legal office who've done some outstanding things in the last few weeks and, uh, one of them is Ms. Susan Hanes. She's been recognized by, uh, the Military Order of the Cooties, which is, uh, organization chief, does a lot of work for. Uh, she is the president of the year for group three in the country. And she had this little certificate, she made me a copy of it and everything. And I still forgot to do it last meeting, so.
I didn't bring the medal.
I wanted to do it this meeting, cause I felt bad that I forgot it. I had it written down and everything, so let's keep it down.
Mr. Chairman, to clarify, the Military Order of the Cooties is the honor degree of the veterans of foreign wars. And we do VA hospitals, nursing homes, and national home for children and, um, Eden Rapids, Michigan. And a side note, I traveled over twelve thousand miles last year.
Thank you for your service.
On the weekends.
Also, it was brought to my attention that I'd be delighted to point out that our county attorney is the president and the Florida Association of Counties Attorneys, this is me. She, uh, she was installed at the annual conference in July, June. I was there, but I didn't get to see it, cause I was too busy going to meetings myself, but, uh, congratulations on saying, and it's a tremendous, uh, honor.
A lot of work, dude, a lot more work than I, I also would like to, uh, with Ms. Hanes, let y'all know how hard she worked at, uh, the Cooties business. But at the same time, her work in the office doesn't suffer a bit. How she dug and rolled that. She worked really hard for the benefit of the citizens.
So, uh, we had our final I seventy-five task force advisory meeting, uh, last Friday in Calum. Uh, as Mr. Scott Toons alluded to earlier, the recommendation from the task force was for any new roads, new construction, uh, we needed to address deficiencies that were on I seventy-five. Uh, we need to address deficiencies on the current connecting roads that we have. Uh, one of them that was emphasized, uh, was State Road twenty-four. For obvious reasons, we have issues, uh, with it beyond, uh, the scope of just more traffic. I mean, it's sort of some dangerous, uh, portions of the road. Mainly in front of the, uh, Speedway. Um, also other roads in Levee County that were directly named in the, in the study were State Road twenty-six, which really doesn't come into Levee County, but the people on the north end of the county do utilize that route to get into, uh, Electra County, as well as one twenty-one and State Road forty-one. All those roads, we looked at how they could be approved. But the key was with input from the community on how acceptable improvements, so that we don't disrupt the nature and, uh, disrupt the lifestyle we've come to appreciate. on how acceptable improvements, so that we don't disrupt the nature and, uh, disrupt the lifestyle we've come to appreciate. Uh, other roads, uh, State Road fifty, State Road forty-four, there was, there was four or five other roads, but there was no, actually, a lot of them are in Leavy County, I was proud to see that. And there's something else. I'm heading right now. So, we'll skip it. So that's all I have for today. Anything else? Oh. Oh, don't forget to vote, yeah. You voted, or I voted?
Sheriff.
Don't tell me you don't forget, I already voted. Yes, sir, Mr. Sheriff.
I think Mr. Patrick Giuliano with the Chief Financial Officer's, uh, Jeff Atwater's office out of Tallahassee just walked in, and I didn't want him to get left out, I think he just might want to speak to you.
He's late, he's supposed to be early. Come on up.
Good morning, uh, uh, thank you Sheriff for the interaction. Uh, just wanted to ask him out this morning and, uh, say hello to the commissioners, I know everybody's, uh, busy with the early voting going on. But just wanted that come out and share with you some of our office resources that we have. Uh, one of the big things that we do is, uh, division of unclaimed property. Uh, that is helping Floridians get back money that they lost. Um, we encourage fellow Floridians to check out our website, which is F L treasure hunt dot org. Um, there is money out there for folks that could have been a leftover utility payment, maybe a premium, or given paid on an insurance policy, um, or perhaps a full paycheck from a job that you worked a long time ago. So we're always trying to reunite Floridians with their hard-earned earnings, their money. And just want to come out this morning and express my appreciation for the work you all do. And, uh, thank you on behalf of our state fire marshal and our CFO, Jeff Atwater. And that just wants to say thank you for the opportunity to say good morning.
Thank you.
Are there any questions? Where's my money?
F L treasure hunt dot org, if you go on there and check, we can check, uh, after the commission meeting, we'll see if we have some.
The process is really easy, and they find really quick.
Yes, it works.
I found money on there myself.
Great.
And we have some winners in the room, so. Yeah, well, we can do it online, we'll do it after the commission meeting.
Thank you so much. Thank you. We're here pushing paid bills. There's motion paid bills and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Uh, we're about in minutes from July fifth.
Sheriff.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? carries. Uh... I knew there was something else. Um, I received a couple of, uh, letters in the mail, I thought everybody else got a copy of this, but, uh, this is from the Department of Transportation. It's just a, a construction and maintenance agreement for the bridge replacement, uh, on County Road four fifty-six, Gold, Gold Bar, uh, from Creek to Dodger Bayou. It's just an explanation of, of the project. In addition to, there was another letter, uh, from the F D O T about, and this is via the port, Mr. Lippman, Ms. Wagner, uh, reducing the speed limit on U S forty-one, South one twenty-one. They're gonna reduce the speed limit to forty-five past the school, so, instead of eight, apparently now it goes up to sixty-five, so. I'll put it, I will leave these copies in the office, if anybody wants to review them. Again, I apologize, I thought everybody received a copy of the said letter.
Mr. Chair, is that construction and maintenance agreement, is that something that needs to go to the road department and then my office?
I guess. F D O T. I don't know, it was in my packet. And like I said, I, I assumed everybody got a copy, you can have my copy.
Probably needs to do that, and we'll be back.
I was putting my envelope.
It'll be back before the board.
Okay.
Now, I don't understand why they want us to do that now, when they have a public hearing on August the thirtieth in Cedar Key.
And I'll pass it on to road department and, and we'll, we'll break that out.
Anyway, anybody who's having business needs to come for us, we'll stay in recess, we'll come back for our budget workshop at eleven.